Good evening and welcome. I am Jean McKnight, Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have opportunity for public comment on two of the agenda items that are the subject of public hearings. First, I'll confirm that all members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martin Jacobs.
Here.
Ted Owens.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
And as I said before, I am Jean McKnight, Chair. Now, there are other participants in this meeting, and of course, please be aware, participants, that others may be able to see you, and anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. And all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www needham may.gov, unless otherwise noted. Now, the ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce each of the speakers on our agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. And for the two hearings that we are conducting, attendees who are zooming in or listening in by phone will have an opportunity to ask those questions. So I also wish to call the role of those who will be presenting at this meeting. So when I call your name, just indicate that you are here. Stephen Hartley for Petco.
I'm here.
Sharon Sikorski of Petco Construction Manager.
Here.
Yes, and Mr. Hartley, I should have introduced you with your title also of SBLM Architects. Hartley.
That's correct.
Then, three participants for TripAdvisor. Walter Benola of Doosan Fuel Cell America, Inc.
I'm present on the call.
Okay. James Kenny, Integrated Integration Manager, Doosan Fuel Cell America, Inc.
I'm here.
Matthew Mayahoffer, Facilities Manager of TripAdvisor.
Here.
Is Mr. Mayahoffer here? I saw him earlier.
I'm here.
Oh, you are. Oh, there you are on that corner of my screen. All right, then, that is the roll call of participants and members, and it is just now timely at 7:20 PM, or just about there. Come on, turn to 7:20 now, because that is the time. Oh, before that, though, of course, I forgot something, and that is, we always have a motion to continue this meeting and the hearings that are on the agenda for this meeting to another date if technical difficulties prevent us from continuing this meeting. The date proposed is October 20, 2020, at 7:15 PM. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Paul Alpert and seconded by Martin Jacobs.
Right.
And now we'll have a vote, and we'll do a roll call for the vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
And the Chair is I, so we've taken care of that, and now it is time to open a meeting.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt.
Yes, please.
You did not list the planning board staff who are present.
Oh, excuse me, yes, of course. I also should have made sure they were present. Our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Planner, Alexandra Clea.
Present.
All right, thank you very much, Paul. So our 7:20 hearing is an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 98-4, Petco, 163 Highland Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts. The petitioner is the petitioner, and the property is located also at 163 Highland Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts. And the hearing is regarding a change in the interior and a minor change to the exterior of the building to accommodate veterinarian services at Petco.
Madam Chair.
First, may I have a motion to waive?
Perfect. That's what I would do. I'd like to waive the reading of the public notice with one caveat. I would like to point out that in the public notice, the applicant is noted as Petco, which I believe is incomplete and therefore incorrect. Should be the full name of Petco. Petco is just a DBA.
Oh, is Petco Animal Supplies Stores, Inc., is the owner?
That's the correct name, but the legal notice doesn't reflect that. So other than with that caveat, I move to waive the reading of the public notice.
Second.
All right, I'll call the roll on that also. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
And the Chair is I, so that's unanimous to waive the reading of the public notice with that expressed correction to the public notice of the full name.
I have an initial question, which is, do we need to discuss whether the public notice is therefore faulty due to the improper applicant named in the public notice? And I'm not taking a position. I want to hear other people.
Well. I would think that if it's a DBA, and it's clear what's intended, I'm just going back to the agenda, which talks about Petco, but also talks about a specific address, which address relates to the materials that we have received. I think wherein that material also designates Petco singularly by logo, but also more formally known as Petco Animal Supplies Stores, Inc., I would think that that's a sufficient reference to know which party, you know, which applicant we're dealing with.
Any other member have a comment on that question?
I will note, Madam Chair, that we've lost our Vice Chair.
Paul Alpert, here he is. He is muted. Paul, you are muted.
Sorry, you did not lose me. I just turned off the video portion for a second as I had to step away from my screen in order to plug in my computer so that I wouldn't have a battery run dead during the meeting. I'm back, and I was nearby audio for the entire thing, so.
And do you have any comment on that issue of whether the public notice was sufficient?
I would think that it is sufficient if anybody reading the public notice knows what this is about and who, and sufficiently knows who the applicant is by reference to the DBA. I don't, I think that there's actual notice to whoever might be, whoever might have actually read it in the newspaper, or gone online to see it.
And I agree, Jean McKnight speaking, Chair, in that Petco is a well-known retailer, and its location in Needham is well-known to the public. So I think it's clear what establishment is the subject of this public hearing. So I think we'll go forward on the understanding that the notice is sufficient.
I have no objection. I just wanted to have that discussion on the record.
Yes. So we have the application for site plan review, which was also, the name of applicant was only given as Petco, and the address was given, it was a Miami, Florida, address, and yet, the record of the Secretary of State of Commonwealth of Massachusetts has, you know, the full name naturally, as was given before, Petco Animal Supply Stores, Inc., with a San Diego, California, address. Do I understand that a revised application has been filed or provided to us?
I believe that a revised application is forthcoming, which is going to have the up, revised name and address, and that the draft decision will then need to be revised to reflect that.
I see. So we would be able to vote tonight on the decision with that condition and understanding?
I think pending receipt of that, yes.
Do we know forthcoming when?
I believe they're working on getting us that information right currently. They're present, maybe they could speak to that.
Yes, Mr. Hartley, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, we received notice today, sometime this morning, that the application was, needed to be signed by different individuals, and with the company name, the proper name. We'll definitely take care of that. Sharon is working hard to get that for us. Definitely takes time to get these signatures. But yeah, we just received notice today. We'd be happy to supply that information with the correct, correct information on the application, very shortly, as soon as we can get it.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Then we'll expect that in a few days, or by the end of the week, or early next week, was reasonable.
Let's hope so. We're definitely working as hard as we can to get the, to get the right information and get the application back to you.
Okay. I also noticed on the application for site plan review, a reference to the zoning district as M128, when there actually are two zoning districts involved. Highway Commercial 128 is the other district, HC128. Is that correction going to be made to the application, or is it thought necessary to make that change to the application?
We didn't speak about that, or Alex did not speak to them about that, but I think it probably makes sense to fix that omission to.
As long as we're getting a new application.
Yes.
It should have that change as well. So.
So we're going to, just so I understand, we're going to proceed with hearing this application and make our decision, assuming it's affirmative, subject to future receipt of a proper application signed properly. So is that, is that the way we're going to proceed?
That's what I would recommend. That allows us to move forward on this tonight and move it along.
And Lee Newman, you had said earlier that there would need to be also a change in the decision. The text that I have in front of me does show that change in a redlined version.
Oh, okay, then Alex did provide that revised, that revised version, then yes, that's the version.
Okay. Then, now is the time for the proponents to take the screen and show their proposal. Mr. Hartley or Ms. Sikorski?
So, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, yeah, you should have been provided with documents that have all this information. I can go over briefly.
Mr. Hartley.
Just the project in general.
I just want to mention that, although certainly we were provided and expect we would have reviewed them, I know I did. This is for the public as well, so.
Sure. Yeah. Okay, understood. We can go over the project then, so everyone's on the same page. A little bit of history on the project. The project went through the Building Department already, and was permitted and approved and constructed, and individuals were hired to staff, and they were trained at this location. We received word sometime after construction was complete, I think after the certificate of occupancy even was, was complete, that we would have to go through the Planning Board. We've been preparing documents for some time and getting everything ready for you to review. So just keeping that in mind, that everything is already built. I'll go over the project right now. We proposed putting in a veterinary clinic. It's 1,679 square feet. It's within the existing mercantile space. It does have its own entrance here. It has four exams, a treatment room, a surgery room, and a small kennel room, which will be used only during business hours. No animals are held overnight. There's no boarding at this location. Just to make that clear, any references to convalescence stays really should mean, should read while they're waiting for the, while the pets are waiting for their owners to pick them up, or before any procedures take place at this location. So no animals are held overnight. We've done a number of these. It's fairly straightforward. I can go to the elevation, and how it will affect the exterior, just within the storefront, the addition of a single door. That's really the main change. Signage, of course, is under a separate permit, and we've been through that. Those are the major changes, just this door that you see here to the exterior. Let's see, within the space itself, it's open to retail, and again, this will only be open during the existing Petco hours, during the retail hours. Sharon can speak to that, any, any questions about the actual operations of the store. But briefly, that's, that's the project.
All right, Ms. Sikorski, do you have comments as well?
The vet clinic does close generally earlier. The Petco store is open generally till nine o'clock at night, and most of our vet clinics are only open till seven. We don't do emergency at there. We usually partner with another vet in the area for emergency services. So that's, we don't do any services after seven. Those would be referred to an emergency clinic.
Right. All right. Well, if that is the extent of the presentation, I want to ask planning board members if they have questions or comments. I'll start with Mr. Jacobs.
Yeah, I really only have one question, well, one or two. I understand that there will be at most five people involved in this area, in this use, a receptionist, a vet, and two or three, you calling them vet techs. Am I right?
That is correct. The vet tech is like a nurse to the veterinarian.
Okay. And are these people all going to be employees of Petco?
Yes, they will.
There's no intention to sublet this?
No.
Because if, if in the future, the decision was made to do that, I think, you know, I'm happy to discuss this with board members, but I think we would want to know that, and we would want to know that whoever the LSE is knows all, any and all of the conditions of the permit and agrees to abide by them. So I just, that's my position anyway, but that's my only question. Thank you.
I might comment. Usually, if there is to be a new LSE, I mean, here, of course, Petco is itself a LSE of the owner of the property, and if there's going to be a further sublease, the, there would need to be an assignment of, permit in some, in some manner. Lee Newman, would you comment on that? Is that our usual procedure?
Well, normally, I think we issue the permit to a particular entity. In this case, we're issuing it to the applicant, and it's non-transferable, absent coming back to the board.
Yes, that's, that's pretty much what I, what I thought and what I was trying to express. All right, Mr. Block, any comments or questions?
Not at this time. Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Alpert.
I have no comments or questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Owens, any comments or questions?
I just have one question for Lee Newman, how this came to be backwards, where it was built and then came to us.
I don't know why the Building Department issued the permit. I mean, the use itself clearly requires a special permit. It came to our attention when they went into the Design Review Board seeking permits for the signage, and then we reached out to them and let them know that it was also going to require permitting through the Planning Board. So I don't know how it slipped through the Building Department.
Okay, thank you. I have no comments or questions about the project itself.
All right. I'd like to mention that we've got comments in writing from other departments, as is customary, from Tara Girdge, who is the Health Department Director, and she had several comments on her email dated September 30, 2020. And then the applicant provided a document where her comments were interspersed with the applicant's response. And the question, her questions had to do with any noise produced on the site, public health sanitation issues, whether there would be areas outside set up as designated dog walking, and what protocols have been put in place for perhaps an increase in waste, production of waste as a result of using some of the square footage of the building for the veterinary as compared with the retail. And do we have a response from Tara Girdge saying that after she reviewed this, she is satisfied with the answers? Do we have that, Lee?
Yes, there was a follow-up email where she indicated that, yes, she was satisfied, that they had, that they had clarified for her how these issues were going to be managed, and she was satisfied.
All right. And that was the only town department communication that I had. Is that correct, Lee? There were no other department communications?
We received communication from the Town Engineer today through a memo, which is not, was not distributed to you because it came in so late, but essentially, Engineering Department reviewed the package, and they indicated that they had no comment or objection to the project. And I believe we also got a response from the Fire Department by email indicating that they had no comment or objection to the project.
All right. So I have no question or comment, so as Chair. So now it's time to see if there are any persons in attendance who wish to make a comment or ask a question. Alex, do you see anyone who is, might be wanting to have something to say?
I don't. The four attendees are all here for other matters, so I think we're good.
All right. Then it's time to turn to our decision. We do have a proposed written decision.
We want to close the hearing first?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Or maybe we don't, because we still don't have the application.
Well, I thought, I had the idea that what we would be doing is closing the hearing, voting on the decision, and a condition of, I don't know what you'd say, delivering the decision, or?
Delivering the application, delivering an updated application that reflects the accurate, full name of the applicant and address, signed by an officer that has legal authority to sign the application, would be a condition of approval.
Would be a condition of approval, okay. And as you know, we're not, we're not going to actually sign this decision for several days, because it takes a while for everybody to go and sign the decision. So that will be, I assume, the part of the motion that will be made to approve the decision. I do want to say that on page three of the decision, I noticed two, two, excuse me, two typos.
Oh.
In section 1.7.
Jean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but why don't I go ahead and make the motion to close the hearing, subject to the receipt of a correct application? And then we can proceed to talk about the decision itself.
All right. I guess that's a good way to put it, because if we don't get the corrected application, we would, we would make this a subject of a further hearing to decide what we're going to do about it. So yes, that, that motion, I appreciate your making that motion, Mr. Jacobs.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
It's a motion.
That was a motion, I believe, Mr. Jacobs made. So now we're, I'll go down the roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
And the Chair is I. So the hearing is closed, and now we're proceeding to discuss the decision, and I was a little premature in going in that direction. So, but I did notice two typos on page three, in paragraph numbered 1.7, that begins with convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement. One, two, three, four, five. In the sixth line, at the very end, the word should be specify, not specific, says, as the original permit did not, should be specify hours of operation. But that, and then in paragraph numbered 1.9, that begins with adequate methods for the disposal of refuse. In the second last line, the word is, should be deleted, so that it's, it says, the petitioner has arranged for hazardous waste disposal to be handled by a third party. It was a word is in there that, it's a mistake apparently. Okay, so those, those are the only things, wording issues or substantive issues indeed that I saw. Did other, did any other member have any comment on the wording or the substance of the decision? Did other, did any other member have any comment on the wording or the substance of the decision?
I don't have any comment on the wording. I do have a question for the applicant or for Mr. Hartley, whether he's had an opportunity to review the decision, whether he has any comments or questions.
I do not have any, do not have any further comments. I don't have any questions.
Have you had a chance?
Thank you.
Have you had a chance to review the draft decision, though?
I have, but more importantly, Sharon Sekerski of Petco.
I did read it. The only thing that, I did read it. The only thing that I had a comment on, and I think you addressed that Stephen had to do with the convalescence, just making sure that everybody understands that no animals are kept in the vet clinic overnight. They are only kept there during the day while waiting for procedures or for their owners to pick them up.
Is that clear? We could go back and look at the, any paragraphs that deal with that.
The only place that that language is used is where it talks about the use that's specifically allowed under the zoning. So they, that word is used because the definition of the use by special permit includes that term. And that's the only, it's used twice in the decision, and it's just a quote of the zoning language.
Madam Chair, even though we've closed the hearing, this raises a question in my mind that perhaps Ms. Sekerski can answer, which is, what would happen if the store, the location, is getting ready to close, and there's an animal that has not been picked up yet?
Then they would make, well, usually we don't have that issue. Most times, the owners do come and pick that up. I would have to check out and find out what our procedure is on that. Either I would assume somebody stays there or comes back and checks on a regular basis to check on the safety of the animal. But most of our procedures are, are small procedures. We're doing deep dental cleaning, spays and neuters, minor breaks, things like that. Things that require a convalescence would get sent to our emergency, that, that we partner with.
And as far as, I just want to make sure in the decision, as far as the conditions of the decision, have we made that clear under limit, under?
No.
Conditions and limitations. Lee, please, go ahead.
I think it probably would be a good idea if we specifically added that as a condition. It's not, I don't think it's clear enough.
Okay.
I was going to ask Ms. Sekerski, you say you partner with another vet in the area who can handle an overnight stay? Have you, have you already found someone in this area to partner with?
I do not know who that is, but yes, my understanding is we do have an agreement set up with somebody to take those special need patients.
Okay, so I don't really care who it is, but would you have any problem just sending a notification to Lee identifying who that other vet is?
Yeah, I can get that information and send that over.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking in the conditions and limitations. And I think maybe what we're, where that is found is more in the description of the use. Let's see, can you lead us to where in the decision there is anything said about the limitations?
Well, I think what I tried to do was, we tried to do was to capture what they had committed to do, which indicated they were not going to have overstays by referencing back, saying that the operation was to be as, as it was described in section 1.1 and 1.3 of the decision, and is further presented in the exhibits. But I think, so it's covered in those things, but I think it probably would make sense to clarify in that paragraph, make clear that, you know, there aren't going to be no overnight stays.
Yes. Yes, I think that, that, that is, it is something we should do. I'm scanning this again, and I just don't see anything specific enough in the decision.
Well, it says, it says it in paragraph 1.1, it says, no animals will be housed overnight or during non- business hours. And so the reference is back to that paragraph as a condition, but that paragraph 3.6 doesn't specifically have that language in it. So if you wanted, we could repeat that language again in 3.6, even though there's a reference.
I'm sorry, Lee, I did not notice it. I was scanning so quickly. No animals will be housed overnight. Okay, so we do have that, and it's just a matter of referring specifically in the limitation section back to that. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So with the correction of the typographical errors that I mentioned, and with the addition of the language making an express limitation that no animals should be housed overnight, is there any other change that any planning board member would like to see to this decision? Then, is it appropriate to have a motion to approve the decision on a condition that the corrected application is submitted in a timely manner before the condition will be signed and delivered?
So move with the additional caveat that subject to the changes we just discussed and approved of.
Right.
All right, so that motion has been made by Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Alpert?
Is it more appropriate to first vote on the relief requested? And I'm happy to make that motion right now, because I have the language in front of me.
Excellent, thank you.
And so, subject to the receipt by the Planning Director of a corrected and appropriately signed application, I move that the requested major project site plan special permit amendment under section 7.4 of the bylaw and section 3.2 of the major project special permit number 98-04 dated May 18, 1998 be granted. And I move that the requested special permit under section 3.2.5.2 per an enclosed perent of the bylaw for a veterinary office and/or treatment facility, including convalescent stays, but not the boarding of animals in the Highland Commercial 128 zoning district be granted. And I move that the requested special permit under section 3.2.6.2 per an H enclosed perent of the bylaw for a veterinary office and/or treatment facility and/or animal care facility, including but not limited to the care, training, sitting, and/or boarding of animals in the mixed-use 128 zoning district be granted, subject to and with the benefit of the plans of the planned modifications, conditions, and limitations as set forth in our decision.
All right, we have that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I also have a question for discussion. I noticed that number two references Highland Commercial 128 only. Number three references mixed-use 128 only. Should they not both, two and three reference both districts?
Respond to that, although may, it may be Planning Director Lee Newman would be better able to respond, but it seems to, it seems that the particular special permits are called out in these different sections for these, for the uses listed in our zoning bylaw in these particular districts. So that's why they're, we're doing it twice, you know, two special permits, one for the particular use in in the Highland Commercial, and one for the particular use in the mixed-use 128 zoning district. Does, does that make sense, Mr. Jacobs?
I haven't checked back to the sections.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's the intent, the property sits in two, it sits in two zoning districts. And so because it's in two zoning districts, it needed a special permit for that use in both districts. This is the only that runs with the property.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
And the uses are not identically worded in the bylaw. I haven't actually gone back to the bylaw myself, but that's why they're slightly worded slightly differently.
That's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and there's been that discussion. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote on that motion to grant the special permits. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
All right, now we, thank you then. And the Chair is aye, so that the special permits are granted unanimously. And we now turn to a motion for the decision itself with the changes both amendments to the text to correct typos, but also sorry for my phone. But it's, it's one of those robo calls, you know? Sorry.
We just lost the Chair.
Just put the phone under a big pillow, so that won't happen again. I'm sorry. So calling for a motion to approve the decision on the condition that the amended application, as discussed, be submitted and with the changes that were discussed.
I'll move.
Second.
And, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Jacobs, a second by Mr. Alpert. Is there any discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Alpert?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the Chair is aye, and so we have approved the decision with the, with the changes discussed and the condition discussed. All right, then, I thank you for your participation, petitioners. We're all set then with that agenda item. And we'll move on to the next item, which is, and the time we had listed was 7:40 PM, and now it's 7:57, so it, there's no need to wait to open the hearing on the amendment to major project site plan special permit, number 2012-07. And the petitioner is Walter Benola, who gives his address in Hartford, Connecticut, as the petitioner. The property is at 401st Avenue in, which is known as the TripAdvisor Building. And it's regarding TripAdvisor a proposal for equipment called a fuel cell, a fuel cell to provide power. So appearing for the petitioner and that were introduced previously are Walter Benola and James Kenny and Matthew Mayerhofer. So if you have anything you wish to show on the screen, you could put it up, and so go ahead with your presentation.
Madam Chairman? I'd like to move away away the reading of the public notice with the same caveat as in the prior case, which is that I'm quite sure that Walter Benola is not, not the proper applicant, and I understand that they're working to get a proper application before us. With that, with that caveat, I will move to waive the reading of the public notice.
Second, so that a motion was made and seconded. And I'm looking, looking. Yes, indeed, the legal notice had is Walter Benola as the applicant. And we understand that that will be corrected. There will be an application filed that names the applicant as. Will the applicant be named then as Needham Travel Property LLC?
No, Madam Chair, the, the intent is to name TripAdvisor as the applicant. And I signed the application as their agent.
Question, question, is TripAdvisor by that name the owner of the property?
No.
Why would you be doing an application in the name of TripAdvisor then?
They're, they're our client.
Well, I, I think the owner of the property has signed the application as the property owner, and this is the actual, this is the applicant who is the business that's operating at that location. So the application that will be signed then by both parties, it will be signed by TripAdvisor and then co-signed by the owner of the property.
So the, the owner's name, let's, let's just make sure we're clear on this. So we have, we have before us a motion and a second to waive the reading of the public hearing notice, and we are now discussing that motion and and, and focusing on the name of the owner of the property, the name of the tenant or operator of the business. Is that, that's correct?
And the applicant, Madam Chair.
And the applicant, which is different from either the owner or the tenant?
Correct.
Well, I thought the intent was to have the applicant be TripAdvisor, and the property owner was going to co-sign the application. And the problem here was that Walter was representing TripAdvisor. He signed it as the agent, and it really should have been, he should have either had a letter from TripAdvisor authorizing him to act as their agent, which he did not have, or the application could be changed. So the TripAdvisor is listed as the applicant, and the appropriate person at TripAdvisor signs the application as the applicant, and the, and the property owner co-signs it, indicating that it's okay for the work to proceed.
I, I want to be precise here, though. TripAdvisor itself is just a DBA. What's the real name of TripAdvisor?
We have, we have a certificate from the Secretary of State naming Needham Travel Property LLC. Now, is Needham
Advisor?
Is that TripAdvisor, or is that the property owner?
No, that's the property owner.
Okay, so that is the property owner.
And so what, does the property owner then lease the property to some entity that we know as TripAdvisor?
That's correct.
And what is, what is that entity?
Matthew, if you are on the call, if you could.
Yeah, I'm here, Walter. It's, the, the entity is TripAdvisor LLC, I believe.
That's what we want, then?
Got it.
Okay, and so the, the, the notice is faulty in several respects. I, I, I'm happy to vote on this motion to waive the reading and then continue this discussion, but my next question is going to be, after we take that vote, is, is this notice faulty? Now, with the first one, we, Adam made the argument, and I don't, I wasn't prepared to oppose it, that everybody knows that Petco is Petco at, at that address. But who knows that Walter Benola is TripAdvisor? Does anybody know?
Wa, waiving the reading, as he suggested, Mr. Jacobs is not necessarily saying that we're satisfied with the, with the application.
Agreed.
So why don't we get that out of the way? So a motion has been made, and I believe seconded also, right? Somebody seconded the application?
Yes, yeah, yes.
All right, so now we'll just vote on, we're not going to read the whole notice. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi. Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, if this discussion, of course, we, we should have it. Go ahead, Mr. Block.
I apologize, but if there's, if there, if the notice of hearing is insufficient, then, and that's the position of the board, I don't know why we would proceed with a hearing or the motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing.
Because, Adam, I believe, if I'm, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I believe that we can't start to discuss any of the issues until we open the hearing, and the first order of business in opening the hearing is to read the notice. And the first order of business in opening the hearing is to read the notice. And so, we don't want to take the time to actually read the notice.
No, I understand, I understand that, okay. Thank you, I apologize, thank you for the clarification. No further discussion.
No apology needed, Miss, okay. Mr. Block, do you agree that we will not, we'll waive the reading of the notice?
Yes.
And Mr. Albert?
Yes.
And Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the chair is I, so that is unanimous vote to waive the reading of the notice. So before we begin with the presentation, we may as well, at this point, discuss whether we're, first of all, whether we're even going to proceed with the substance of this hearing tonight, but wait until we have a complete and accurate application before us. I'd like the advice of our planning director on process here. Does it make sense, you know, we have these gentlemen present, of course, I don't want to rudely put them off, but does it make sense to have this hearing? Or does it make more sense to simply continue it at this point?
Well, I guess the question is whether you're going to require that, if you feel that it has to be re-noticed, then we should, then it should be re-noticed and heard then.
I guess, so we can't, so the simple solution of just saying, well, we'll vote to continue the hearing as we, as we frequently do, when there's something important missing in the materials or the plans, is not really the proper process here if we don't actually have a proper application before us. I mean, nobody knows who Walter Benola is from East Hartford, Connecticut. All we have is the address of the property to identify.
Is there, Madam, Madam Chair, is it possible, clearly, this is, we all recognize who the parties are, and, or as we have clarity on them all now, is it possible for the participants to deliver their presentation? And that we perhaps hold maybe a decision or make, and then have a hearing subsequent to ensure that we've received the proper application? In other words, I, I just would, I'd hate to, I'd hate to burn the applicant for some administrative problem, if that might have been an internal process. And would like to see that we can otherwise expedite this, so we don't have to go through another, you know, another, we have to go through a hearing, but that other hearing could be just for the administrative purposes to clarify the parties. But we, by then, would all be clear on the technical matter before us.
Madam Chairman, may I respond to that?
Yes, please, Mr. Jacobs.
I hear you, Adam. And I'd like, I hate to be putting people out and doing it again. But, the problem here is this isn't about what we understand, the five of us. This is about the public.
Yes.
And the public, looking at this notice, would have no idea that this is TripAdvisor. There's no mention of TripAdvisor in here. There is a mention of 401st Avenue. But, that's, I don't think that's going to tip somebody off as to the property we're talking about necessarily. But there is, there is, I hear, I hear you. Another way to look at it is, there is reference by the citing the major site plan review and the special, and the previous special permit, 2012-07. And so there is, so there is reference to a specific party and a specific action. And by the purpose of this hearing, and the fact that we've opened this hearing, and through the process of the hearing, have now, we've now identified that Walter Benola is a technician with Dusen, who I think is a party, who's representing the manufacturer of the equipment, that it's possible both the landlord and the tenant are looking to utilize at their own site. And if I'm not mistaken, the landlord, there's a different party between the landlord and the tenant for their own corporate purposes. But essentially, and I know this is not a legal argument, essentially, they are the same party. As, I may be, I may be wrong about that. I know legally that there is a distinction. There's a distinction of the relationship. It has corporate law and tax and other implications. And yet, I think through reference of the site plan, I just wanted, Marty, I guess, if there's a way to go through the meat of the presentation, have everything else lined up, so that, including the decision with our additional subject to the proper applicant. And that way, the next time we have a hearing, that hearing is only a five-minute hearing to ensure that the correct parties have been named. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah, I do. But the problem is, where's the public?
Yes. And I don't know, if Mr. Owens, Mr. Albert have anything to say on this, but I, I will respond that I think when there's a flaw in the hearing, it's notice itself, that there's no, really no point in going through any presentation or discussion, because it would have to be absolutely, completely repeated when the hearing does open, that it has been properly noticed.
There's also, I mean, this is, this is somewhat secondary, but it's also important. I don't think we have anything in the file that shows that Mr. Benola is authorized by either the owner or the tenant to proceed as their agent. Am I rightly?
No, I, is that right?
We haven't, we don't have, we don't have a letter from the property owner or from TripAdvisor indicating that he can act on their behalf formally, no.
Who's Acoustical Technologies Inc., is that Dusen?
Acoustical Technologies Inc. is our acoustical testing firm that we, that we hire to, to do acoustical testing on our sites.
On behalf of Dusen?
That's correct, yeah. So ATI actually replicates the sound that our machine makes when it's on, and then tests sound levels at appropriate intervals, whether they be property lines or, or structures, to make sure that we're in compliance with state and local regulations as they pertain to noise.
Let me just mention, for the sake of Mr. Benola, I don't want him to misunderstand what I'm saying. I have actually no problem with the substance of what's being applied for here. But where the technical process is deficient, believe it or not, I think if we re-notice it properly with the right applicant, with the right authority, we're probably saving TripAdvisor a potential headache here. Because if we proceed with these defects in place, and then someone comes in and says, appeals whatever we do here on the basis of improper notice, et cetera, it's going to take a lot longer than if we correct it first. So I just want to be clear about why I'm doing this.
Well, we need a new application, because the applicant on the application is incorrect.
And.
I mean, the application is submitted not with TripAdvisor as the application, but with Walter as the applicant.
And, and Mr. Albert has a comment, or has something he wants to say, comment or question. And, and then I have a suggestion that I'd like to throw out too, but Mr. Albert.
Yes, and I just, I reviewed the notice again just now, I read it again. And I'm coming down on the side of the objections that are being raised by, by Mr. Jacobs. I don't think that this is sufficient notice to the public that, that this project is, is the TripAdvisor building. Yeah, it gives the property address. I'm uncomfortable not re-noticing this with the proper TripAdvisor applicant in the notice for somebody actually reading it in the newspaper. I was going to ask, but I'm sure the answer is yes, whether the appropriator butters have been given actual notice. I'm sure they have. They may have read it and not known exactly which building in the industrial park. Sorry to call it the industrial park, but that's, that's how I've known it for 50 years, is, is the subject property. And in this particular case, we are dealing with a sound issue and a noise issue that, from what I've read in the papers, is not going to be a problem. But, you know, if somebody does come in and complain that they weren't given proper notice, they didn't have an opportunity to appear at the, at the hearing and to raise objections, as Mr. Jacobs points out, that's going to cause a lot longer delay than just having this re-noticed for, I assume that this can be re-noticed for our October 20th meeting. I would hope so. If not, then certainly our first meeting in November.
It's not going to make October 20th, because the notice has to be out 14 days prior to the date of the meeting.
Then I, you know, then it will be our first meeting in, in November. But, but I think this has to be re-noticed.
I know that I may have made a statement, a call saying it's 7:57, and the hearing was to open at 7:40, and it's time to open the hearing. I'd like to make the record clear that we are not opening the hearing and for the reasons stated. And I do want to see what the board members think of this, however. Our agenda did reference TripAdvisor. And so when it comes to the public, public notice, you know, to the extent that a proper agenda that's posted provides some public notice, I want to ask whether it makes sense, you know, we often, when we have applicants, if they, if they request, before they even file for a special permit, to have an informal meeting with us to discuss what plans, what plans and what documents and what engineering studies we're going to need so that they can be prepared. Do we want to spend any time having that kind of informal meeting with the petitioner to see if the materials that are submitted to us are adequate, or we wish to ask for additional materials? Or do we want to simply move on to our next agenda item? Would anybody like to comment on that proposal?
I would have no objection to that.
I'd have no objection, but I wouldn't push for it either.
Right, we'll leave it up to the petitioners if they want to have any discussion or reaction from the board on the materials presented in the packets provided to us. And so, Mr. Benola, do you want to respond to that suggestion? Or do you simply want to wait until we have the actual hearing?
Madam Chairman, I'm not clear what you're asking. Are you asking that I, that I prefer to have an informal meeting with the board?
It's not a hearing, it's just a meeting. And to discuss with you whether the materials that you've presented, and of course, we already discussed the application as being inadequate, and therefore the notice, we don't have to discuss that anymore. But, for example, we have a noise study. Is there anything else the board wants? Do we have, you know, what offices of the town will we want review of this by? To what extent have they been consulted already?
Sure.
Those sorts of things.
Sure, I would be, I would be thrilled to meet informally with anyone on the board, or all of you, for that matter, at your convenience, to review what we, what you, what you're in receipt of now, and to see if it's adequate for, for presentation.
Well, I'm suggesting we do that right now at this, at this meeting. Mr. Jacobs, did you have a reaction to that? You raised your hand just now, no?
No, I'm, no, I'm just rubbing my head.
Okay, Mr. Owens.
Yeah, I do have a reaction to that. I think that's an administrative matter that we can leave to the planning director. And I don't think that it's a productive use of the planning board's time to go through the application on administrative issues. That is the role of the planning director. So I do not think that that's a good way for us to use our time right now.
All right, well, I very much respect that position, and perhaps that is the best thing. And I think even the applicant was suggesting perhaps meeting at another time. I don't think he understood that I was saying that we'd go through that right now. So, at this point, we will end our discussion of that agenda item and move on to our next agenda item and await the formal revised application of, that includes the authorization of Mr. Benola to represent the owner and the applicant, the TripAdvisor company by its formal name.
Lee, I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman. Lee, do you see any problem noticing this for the first meeting in November?
I think, I think that works, but let me just look at the calendar, so I can confirm that it's, I think that works.
I think we have to, this is Alex Clea, I think we have to get it to the paper by the end of this week, which is totally doable, but we would need, if, if not the actual application, if there's any issue getting signatures, we would at least need the information about who the technical legal applicant is, so we can include it in the notice.
Right, because they'd have to run on the 15th and the 22nd.
Okay.
Mr. Benola can correct us if I'm wrong, but I believe it's TripAdvisor LLC.
That is correct, yes.
And so then, it's just someone who's listed at the Secretary of State's office as being a manager or authorized to sign on behalf of TripAdvisor signs the application, and the appropriate person signs by the owner will be all set on the application.
Understood.
And I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Lee, but I don't think that you need to have that in by the end of the week in order for us to, to send the notice to the, to the newspaper.
No, but we need it soon thereafter, because it's got to be filed with Teddy. And it should be filed with Teddy before the notice appears.
Ah, the notice will be next.
Which would be on the 15th.
Just from Mr. Benola's understanding, Teddy is the town clerk.
Right, and, you know, and we're, Alex is going into the office, you know, so it needs to be in, hopefully, by the end of this week. You know, so that next week, when Alex is in Needham, she can file it with Teddy, and it's in Teddy's office before the 15th.
Now, Mr. Benola, we don't want to be sending this into the newspaper if that timeframe isn't reasonable for, for you to gather these, these signatures. What would you say about that?
I don't think they will have an issue gathering signatures by the end of the week.
Okay.
I have Mr. Mayerhofer on the, on the call tonight, and. And the owner of the property was very responsive with the signature, so I don't anticipate an issue with it.
All right, then, at this point, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Banola. And let's see, I know we had Mr. Kenny and Mr. Mayor Hoffra also appearing. So we'll look forward to seeing the team at our first meeting in November. All right, so our next agenda item is the transfer of permit. And it's an amendment to major project site plan special permit number 96. Dash five, Ultimate Beauty Laser Spa, Inc. And the applicant has an address in Rochester, New York. And the transfer of permit would be to Laser MD Med Spa. Which has a brain tree address and the property is located at 922 958 Highland Avenue. And this was not noticed as a public hearing. The thought would be that the board would be comfortable in treating this as a minor modification of the. Special permit and simply a transfer of of permit. Actually, maybe I misspoke in saying minor modification because really it's a transfer permit, which is called for in in the. In the original special permit that if there is to be a transfer, it has to be approved by the planning board. And it doesn't, it doesn't require a public hearing, so.
If I may be heard on this. In the same vein as the other two. Laser MD Med Spa is also a DBA. It's not the correct name. However, there's no no, there's no public notice required here. It is a minor modification. And I understand that Lee and or Alex already is in the works with getting a corrected application with the correct applicant name. So maybe they could fill us in on where we are on that.
Alex Clea, do you want to comment on where we are in that process?
Sure, we received an electronic version of the updated application shortly after we alerted them to this issue. And they're going to be putting. Original in inter, not interoffice, snail mail, USPS mail. Jean, I also just wanted to mention just right before I started speaking, you were starting to break up a little bit. So we'll just keep you posted if that becomes any worse.
Well, thank you. It usually doesn't take long to just zoom in again. That happens. Did that, did that, I just said, what I just said, did that come across? Um, you are breaking up a little bit. Maybe as we're transitioning to this new issue, I should just give that a try. Leaving the meeting, so we'll have a brief recess just so that I can zoom in again. It probably won't take more than a minute.
Marty, can you explain again? Or maybe I'll ask the chair to have you explain again, what's the deficiency here?
Yes, the name of the applicant is listed as Laser MD Med Spa.
I see that.
That is not a legal entity. That's just a DBA.
Right.
And so it should be a legal entity, whether it's an LLC or a corporation or whatever it is, it should be done right. So I alerted Alex and Lee to this first thing this morning and they've been working with them. To get it corrected and I think that's in process and I think that's what Alex is telling us.
I think what we've learned here, Adam, because we've had this problem all of a sudden on three applications. Is that when we're working remotely, we're not holding people's hands as tightly as we do when we're in the office. And I think we're going to have to update our application so things are clearer. And we're going to have to require that they give us the information from the Secretary of State so that we know that the information that's represented on the application is accurate. So we're not spinning around here at the end with applications that are incomplete or inaccurate. So we need to do more, I think, at the on the front end to make sure this doesn't doesn't recur and we will take those steps.
I took a check a minute to plug my computer into. It has a good little battery life, but just in case.
I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't hear what you said.
I say, welcome back, Jean.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, so meeting, meeting will go on at this point and. To the substance that's before us regarding. The transfer of license is is someone appearing, I see a person on our screen, Richard Thoma. Yes, and Richard, you may need to, if you haven't already unmuted and and if you wish to show video, show that.
Hello, I'm here.
Yes, yes, please, please identify yourself, Mr. Thoman, for the public who might be listening in.
My name is Richard Thoman and I am the corporate controller for Laser MD Med Spa Management LLC.
Okay. All right, so you're the cop and and is that party, the proposed licensee? If we approve the transfer?
Correct.
Correct, okay. All right, do so we'll proceed with asking you to make whatever presentation you want to make to the to this board.
So Laser MD purchased Ultimate Beauty. Close, the acquisition closed at the end of August, beginning of September. We had the same issue that Petco had where we went to, we got our business license and went to get signage and this issue came up for us as well. Luckily, Alex has been fantastic and I got the documentation to her as quickly as I could. We did find the same thing that Mr. Jacobs mentioned that on the Mass website. That David Pascal and John were the principals of the private equity firm that invest in Laser MD. Were the were the owners listed on the mass.gov website. So we got that updated today. I sent that back to Alex. Laser MD is 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 a company that operates a med spa very similar to Ultimate Beauty. We, the Ultimate Beauty offered laser hair removal primarily, which is is a treatment that we also offer. We do also offer additional procedures, which is, which is. The reason why Alex and I have been communicating so often because we added on, if I look back at the letter. Here that we gave to you guys, just so I'm specific on the the procedures, body contouring. Injectables and skin rejuvenation. Injectables is Botox and filler. Body contouring is it's cool sculpting. It's basically a machine that. You attach to the skin and it cools and 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 basically releases fat cells. And then skin rejuvenation and is a treatment, so it's facials and things of that nature. So not massive deviations from what Ultimate Beauty was doing previously to us. So, you know, we're looking forward to opening up, we're we're, we've got the signage in process. We've got some updates going on inside the facility, nothing, no major. Construction going on, just painting and making the place look look nice again. But other than that, the business will operate exactly as it has under the original special project permit. The rooms aren't changing. We will have licensed estheticians, licensed nurses working on the facility at all times. There won't be more rooms than are in the original project. There won't be more customers than the original project allows. So other than that, other than the procedures that I've just laid out, nothing is changing in the way the business will be operated.
Right, thank you, Mr. Thoman and members of the planning board. Just anyone have a question or comment? Mr. Albert.
Yes. Well, I want to preface it by saying that I really have no objection to this application and I have no objection to the transfer. But since you mentioned that. That Laser MD. Purchased Ultimate Beauty Laser Spa, that raised the question in my mind as to whether. I mean, since you didn't know that our permission was needed, that said to me that either somebody. Either nobody read the special permit. Or just read the special permit but didn't notice that, which is which can happen. But it raises the question in my mind as to whether Laser MD Med Spa. The appropriate parties there or the appropriate counsel has read the special permit and whether. All of the conditions of the special permit are known to Laser MD Med Spa and 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 they're ready to to comply. With them. I I know in businesses are bought and sold. There there is due diligence that is done and all legal documents are provided and reviewed. And it sounds like this document either wasn't provided or wasn't reviewed properly. So I I just wanted to make sure that we have the representation that the special permit has been read. And will be complied with going forward.
Yes, absolutely. So David Silverstein is the person who signed our application to transfer the permit. He is one of the principals at the private equity firm that owns us. John Bates and Pascal Denis, who are the other two owners listed on the mass.gov website, have also reviewed the special permit. We've all reviewed it together. Donna Simons, who's our president, she's she and I are not listed on the mass.gov website. I I will be updating that this year. To reflect us accordingly, but we've all reviewed it together. We are all 100% on board to comply with the the conditions in the original permit. Thank you.
And so that's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, any any further question or comment on the part of the board? I I have a question. So if there's no other questions, I just want to focus on one of the conditions. And that is condition three point six. In the original special permit. Saying staffing shall be limited to licensed hair removal technicians and licensed professional estheticians. Now, the particular work that you described, Mr. Thoman, will that work be be done by? Either a licensed hair removal technician or a licensed professional esthetician?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, and the the decision also requires. The employment of a licensed physician to oversee the daily practices of the laser hair removal technician. Now, I don't think employ means that the physician has to be an employee of the spa. But that they employ somebody, they have somebody. Do you in fact have somebody to perform that function?
Yes, we have a medical director who operates out of Newton.
Okay. Right, I wanted to make sure that those particular conditions were understood and will be complied with. So I noted that the application is signed by the owner of the property. Is that is that correctly? We're satisfied that Nino McClosy, a manager of Highland Montrose LLC. Has signed this app application. I'm not seeing us, we don't have a Secretary of State printout of the owner to to be sure that we're satisfied. Lee, you're you're muted.
I believe that he is the owner. I've dealt with him in the past, but we'll we'll pull up the website just to make sure he's listed.
All right. So.
Can I, can I ask a question about that? It does say Highland Montrose LLC. Do I understand you correctly as saying that you've seen something that says he signed the application?
Yes, I.
I don't see that.
This may have been received.
Oh, I do see that. Excuse me, excuse me, sorry.
Very, very small writing and printing, but it's right there. Owner's permission if.
I mistake, I missed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we actually had two, two pieces of paper that were filed.
Yeah, I see them both.
And they're signed by. One is signed by David Silverstein, the vice president of Laser MD at Med Spa, correct? Yeah, and the other is signed by Donna Simmons, whose title is not given.
Alex's letter says president.
Yeah, Alex, Alex and I have have since changed that. So David is the primary signatory on all of the documents. Donna is the president of Laser MD, but she's not listed anywhere. So I figured just to keep it clean, per Alex's instructions, just to have David sign everything.
Oh, yes, I see, right, because he's listed on the Secretary of State's printout of. And she is not. Okay, so we're just going to clean up that application. And. And so then the question is, at this point, since there's no further questions about the transfer. And we do have. A draft decision. Is there a motion to approve the transfer of of special permit? Let's see. So the decision that we're called on to make. Is that the we find that the proposed transferee intends to operate the business as it had been operated by the prior permit holder. And that we consent to the transfer by Ultimate Beauty Laser Spa, Inc.
Set up to. To LLC.
To Laser MD Med Spa Management LLC. I think there's just a typo here, Lee. It says. To from. Consents to the transfer by Ultimate Beauty Laser Spa, Inc. To, should just say TO, correct?
Right.
Word from is is just an error. Okay. To Laser MD Med Spa Management LLC. So that's the decision we're called on to make. Does anyone wish to present a motion to that effect?
I'm willing to make the motion. Did we put in there subject to the receipt by the planning director of the corrected application?
I did not when I was discussing it and so.
So.
You're making a motion, please add that.
Right, so so I move that subject to the planning director receiving. A corrected application satisfactory to her. The planning board approves and consents to the requested transfer. Of special permit number 96 dash five.
Second.
All right, so we have a a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, then, all in favor, I will call the roll. Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And the chair is I, so that transfer is approved unanimously. And then the this the decision itself, the written decision, should we take a separate vote on that?
I move that, Jean, did you catch any any other changes or?
That's the only one I saw. I I read it earlier this evening.
Yes, I read it also. I didn't, I didn't catch that typo. Thank you for that. But subject to the correction of that one typo, I move that. We approve the decision as. we approve the decision as, as, as drafted.
Second.
So that has been moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Alpert, seconded by Mr. Jacobs. Is there any further discussion? So I'll call for a vote. Call the roll call. Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And Mr. Owens, I thought you said here. Did you say aye?
I intended to say aye, but I couldn't tell you for sure what I said.
All right. So the chair is also an aye, and so we have a unanimous vote to approve the decision. And it's understood that the signing and delivery of that decision is conditional upon the, as the, as the vote to grant the permit was, is conditional upon the receipt of the corrected application. So we thank you, Mr. Thelman. We are all set for this evening with that. And the next.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're very welcome. So we, we have minutes. I got, I got the minutes in a dra, in draft form today from Alex and I did have, have time to review them and we make some, I make a red line version that I sent out, you know, just an hour before our meeting. So I don't know whether we want to take the time to go over this. It's not a quick, quick question of saying, let's accept these minutes. Like, because I did have a couple of, of questions that I highlighted. So do you, do you want to go forward with the discussion of these minutes and have me ask my questions and make the changes? Or do you want to put this off till our next meeting?
I think we have time.
Okay. All right. Well, on the April 11th minutes, on the second page, the pages are not numbered. And that, this pertains to, this is the public hearing on our zoning amendments. The second to the last paragraph. Mr. Bloom of the applicant LCB Senior Living was commenting on the fourth floor and how the fourth floor will be used. And the way this was worded, it says, there is also, there is also a common terrace for the independent units. Then our minutes say, there will be no wa, no walking on the roof at all. Kind of strange. Residents will need to take the elevator to the third floor and then go up. But that doesn't make any sense. There's an elevator shaft that goes all the way up to the fourth floor. Anybody who's, I understood that there are to be units on the fourth floor. So I think there's some mistake, but the wording, and I propose that we delete those two sentences. There will be no walking on the roof at all. Residents will need to take the elevator to the third floor and then go up. Is it meet with your approval to delete those, those two sentences from the minutes?
I don't have any objection to leaving the sentences. I'm not sure they're both mistakes, though. I recall him stating that the people were not going to be allowed to just be walking freely on the roof. I do recall that.
And what about the elevator? People will have to take the elevator to the third floor and then go up?
There was some discussion of that, but if we delete both sentences, I have no objection to that.
But isn't that in reference to a roof terrace?
Yeah, they're right.
So that has nothing to do with access to the apartments that are on the fourth floor. It just has to do with the access to the, to some sort of a, a roof terrace that.
You said, there is also, actually, the, the wording was, I changed it just to make it make sense, but originally the minute said, it is a common area, air, it is a common terrace for the independent units.
I think that part is correct.
Yes, I didn't make any change. The only thing I changed it. There is also a common terrace for the independent units.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to get clarity. Marty, are you thinking that the, that the people for the assisted living and the memory care facility would have accessed by elevator to the third floor only? And would then be required to, to hike up a flight of stairs to access the exterior space on the fourth floor? While the residents would be the only ones that would have access to an elevator?
I, I didn't say that. My understanding is that the fourth floor independent living folks have access to that common terrace.
My understanding is that there is, that there are two separate structures, if you will, on the fourth floor. One is, are the, are the apartments that each have their own exterior space as well. And that separately, there is another space on the fourth floor that's like a hardscaped kind of exterior space so that other people, particularly from the assisted living, would have access to some rooftop terrace type thing. But I've never understood that to be a scenario that would require either it residents of the independent living on the fourth floor units or people with, that are in the assisted living and memory care units would either, would have to hike up a flight of stairs to get to the fourth floor.
Mr. Block, you are absolutely right. The rest of the paragraph is clear. It says, Mr. Block wanted to clarify if the fourth floor common spaces would be available to all residents or restricted to certain groups. Lee Bloom said is intended for the assisted living residents. Where it's a fourth floor common area is intended for the assisted living residents. Then he went on to say there is also a common terrace for the independent units.
Can I just say, I don't think any of that has anything to do with the zoning that was being discussed. It has to do with the project. And that's something we'll deal with at the special permit stage. So Lee is kind of irrelevant to the zoning discussion that those minutes were all about.
So then, if, if it's all of you with the rest of the board, I, I've proposed deleting about no walking on the roof and deleting about taking the elevator. Because it's not only unclear, it's not relevant. All right?
We'll follow that.
All right. The other changes are so, I mean, I've got a lot of little red line changes, but it's all just for, you know, me, grammar and stuff. All right, now we're moving on to. I'm getting a little tired here. Heather Lane. Heather Lane. So this would be the, if you have these before you, but it's one, two, three, fourth page. And it has to do with something about dry wells. It's the, after there was a vote, the first paragraph deals with a vote to close the hearings. Then there's a paragraph with my name about a draft decision. Miss McKnight noted there's a draft decision. Then the next paragraph is the one I'm focusing on. Ms. Newman noted the landscape island. Some details have been provided, but she'd like a more comprehensive plan with more detail. Mr. Mr. Smart stated he's fine with this request. Then the language that doesn't make sense to me is after Mr. Smart stated he is fine with this request and dry wells for all existing lots, but not the new ones. Is he saying he's fine with a requirement for dry wells for all existing lots? And what exactly does he mean by existing lots?
Lee, you're muted.
Yeah. There, there were existing houses there that would need to have dry wells installed. The new houses in the subdivision are going to have dry wells installed and the drainage design really requires that all the houses in the subdivision have dry wells. So I think this was grabbing the existing homes that would, a requirement that they too have dry wells installed.
Okay, he is fine with this request, this request being, I understand it, that the more comprehensive plan for the, for the cul-de-sac and dry wells for all existing lots, but not the new ones. Is he saying that he objects to the, to the requ, to our condition that there be dry wells for the new lots?
I didn't, I, that, that wasn't my memory. My memory was that he was okay with the dry wells for all of the houses, whether they were new or whether or not they were, they were existing. And that's how the permit is crafted and drafted, that we issued and approved.
So we need to strike the last four words, but not the new ones. Oop, but not the new one, five words.
Actually, it would say, and dry wells for all existing lots and new lots, right?
Well, either that or strike the last five words.
Just strike the last five words. I've been, I'm inclined to just take out the reference to dry wells. Yeah, Lee was right. I mean, just take it out because we have to say and dry wells for all existing lots and new lots.
I don't have any objection either.
Or, and I don't want to put words in his mouth that he didn't say. So I, I think we just can delete it.
Lee, is our official record these minutes or the tapes of the meetings? Because if our official record is the tapes of the meetings, this discussion is really kind of irrelevant.
Well, I think I probably, I think the minutes are our official record. Well, that's, that's an interesting question, Paul. I don't know how long the tapes will last or.
I've always thought it was minutes and that the tapes are just a tech, a tool.
I think the minutes constitute the quote official record.
Yeah. Okay, so the next paragraph has to do with, it, it says, here we're talking about the Heather Lane, Heather Lane needs to be completed to a certain point before the Heather Lane, you can't just complete the Heather Lane extension paving and so forth. If the Heather Lane isn't complete, because of course you need to have access over Heather Lane. So Ms. Newman stated there needs to be a condition linking the two. And the extension needs to be in compliance with Heather, Heather Lane. I don't understand what that means.
Well, I think what I was trying to say is that there needed to be a convention which ensured that the construction of Heather Lane was complete or, or in place be, before Heather Lane extension was allowed, was allowed to have lot releases.
Yeah. So, and the.
In other words.
There needs to be a condition linking the two and the extension. And, and really it's, and Heather Lane needs to be.
Heather Lane needs to be completed and constructed to a, to a satisfactory level before any releases on Heather Lane extension would be permitted because that's the access to Heather Lane extension.
Okay. Before any lot releases, is that the word you used?
Yes.
Yes.
These is our approved, approved for Heather Lane extension. Okay, so we'll change that wording to that. Oh, you know, it says that we voted in two cases. This is a quote apparently from the motion to, to accept the definitive subdivision decision. I mean, we usually say approve, but if that was the wording, I guess I'll leave it alone because I don't want to be changing the wording of somebody's, of the original motion. But anyway, it says accept in, in both, in two cases. But then, then when it comes to the special permit, it says approve. So I guess we did use the word accept for the definitive subdivision decision. So those, so those were, those were my only changes in question. So if those corrections are made as well as the sort of grammar and, and clarity changes that I made to the minutes, shall I now make a motion? Or ask for a motion of, for acceptance of the minutes with those changes of the August 11th, 2020 planning board mid, meeting minutes?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. So on the motion to accept the minutes as, as revised of the August 11th, 2020, meeting, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And then we have the August 11th, 2001 minute.
That was.
August 20.
August 26.
26. I've got a red line version of that, but I didn't actually have any questions at all. Just little, little typos and so forth. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the August 26th, 2020 planning board meeting?
The correction suggested by Ms. McKnight, I so move.
Yes. Second. All right. Call for a vote. All in favor. Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And Mr. Owens.
Aye.
All right. So, and the chair's aye. So we're having, and I'm supposed to accept those minutes. So we've dealt with the minutes. And I guess the, we want to make a slight revision in the seating policy to extend the applicability date. And we, we have a document before us, Newton Planning Board Temporary Outdoor Seating or Display Policy enacted May 20th, 2020. Revised August 11th, 2020 and October 6th, 2020. And our August, I guess it would have been our August 11th, 2020. We extended this to, policy to Thanksgiving Day, November 26th, 2020. Seems like it was more recent than that, was it? Well, maybe we didn't make note in the heading of that vote to extend it to November 26th. But now we are asked to extend it not to Thanksgiving Day, November 26th, but instead to just, I don't know, roughly a week later, December 1st, 2020. And the reason we're asked to do that is to make our policy consistent with the policy adopted by the select board. So I, I call for a vote. If there's any discussion, we would have it, but it's just to make that change to December 1st, 2020.
Second.
So move, seconded. Okay.
Marty, Marty.
Question, this, excuse me?
Marty, Marty's motion's moved, made the motion.
Marty made, okay. So now a vote. Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. So we have approved that change to our policy to extend the time period for the policy, December 1st, 2020. So is there, not seeing any other correspondence that's been provided to us in advance. Is there any other report you wish to make, Lee Newman?
Um, I just want to tell you that I got the first phase of the traffic study from GPI today on Highway Commercial 1 and Tony and I are reviewing it. And so I hope to set up a meeting for the working group sometime within the next couple of weeks to review those findings. So I'm, we are proceeding on that. I'm going to be forwarding to all of you the 40B guidelines that Dan Matthews updated. They've been distributed and we need board comments on those. And so I'll be sending those out. And we got the AG's approval on the rezoning that we did for the hospital. So there. And we got the AG's approval on the rezoning that we did for the hospital, so their permit when they file it will be timely. And I anticipate getting a filing from Children's Hospital sometime within the next couple of weeks, as well as on the Parametrics Building at 140 Kendrick Street, because they're making some, they're updating the site plan approval there to accommodate the fact that it's going to really be a campus that's going to service multiple tenants in individual buildings as opposed to one principal occupant. So they're making some minor changes around the entries, extending the patio at the rear of the building and providing for some additional pedestrian linkages down to Cutler Lake at the back of the building. And that application will be coming in sometime within the next couple of weeks.
And that's, that's the building that was occupied by a single tenant with some initials that...
Parametrics.
PTC.
PTC.
Yes, PTC, that was the PTC building that's been vacant for a while. All right, very good. I'm reminded to mention two things. One is, Lee, I believe you mentioned, at least to me, that there is a proposed tree bylaw that's being worked on, and there was a suggestion of reviewing that tree bylaw by a certain date. Is that, is that coming up?
Well, we have a meeting with the select board, a chair, vice chair meeting, I think it's next week, I think it's next week, Thursday, to talk about the tree bylaw and next steps for that. You, Paul and I are attending that.
Okay, and I would attend it too, I think, and I, it's on my to-do list that I've got to review the tree bylaw that's being, that's going to be discussed.
That's correct, and that's scheduled for Thursday morning, I think we're on, we're on the calendar for 8:30.
Right, okay. And then I became aware, oh, it was through the Newton Needham Chamber of Commerce newsletter. By the way, that is an excellent newsletter. If you don't get it, it's well worth signing up for. Greg Greedman really does a good job leading that organization, I think. And what I was alerted to is a hearing, well, I don't know, it wasn't a formal kind of hearing, but it was an opportunity for the Massachusetts Department of Public Works to present the timeline and the proposed work that's to be done on Highland Avenue in Needham and on Needham Street in Newton, that, for the portion of Highland Avenue in Needham that is under the control of the state, extending from, let's see, it's west of Gold Street, I'm forgetting the name of the street that's just west of Gold Street, where that's, that portion starts, you know what I mean, Lee, and there's condominiums on one side of the street.
Webster Street?
Webster Street, yeah. So it extends all the way from Webster Street, and then, of course, all the way to the Charles, wherever the boundary between the two communities is, and then the work is going to extend all the way where, you know, you go down Needham Street, and then it takes a left onto another street and goes over to Route 9, where there are exits from Route 9 onto, onto the street that leads to Needham Street. So it was a very interesting presentation, and there are links on the DPW website to the plans, and I was also told that these plans are available in our town engineer's office. The time period involved in this project is really going to begin right away. They're going to start in the Needham end, and the work will start in November, and it will continue for about a year. So we're going to be having, you know, some installation of utilities and a complete repaving, there will be takings. In fact, the takings, I was told, at least they, in this meeting, it was said that the takings have already occurred along this strip, and I was, you know, kind of interested to see the plans. It also was mentioned, a question was asked by an attendee about the fish pond at Muzzy, and the answer was that the Muzzy is satisfied to get rid of that, of that fish pond, it's going to be eliminated as part of this work. So I wasn't sure, Lee, if you were aware of that, and to what extent the other members of the board would want to be brought up to date on this project. I know I, I don't feel even that I was completely brought up to date, because I really would like to see the plans, I didn't really...
I can certainly do that, I thought, I thought you were aware of that, of that project. Actually, the, the opening ceremony for that is scheduled for October the 20th. So I can, I can certainly get you the proposal, yes. I thought that you were aware of that project and its, and its detail, but I can get you the documents.
Well, I've been aware of the project, but I've never been aware of the details. I don't think we ever had it as an agenda item in our meeting or any kind of presentation from our own engineering firm or anybody from the state, have we?
Well, the state, the state's done a number of different presentations to the community, and I think members, members of the CEA, I think, were attending, I know Dever was actively involved, I think, I don't, Adam, did you attend any of those state presentation meetings?
Yeah, I...
There've been a number, there've been a number of hearings and public meetings held about this, both in Needham and in Newton.
Okay, well, this happened to be the first one I attended, and it was very informative. So...
I can, Madam Chair?
Yes, Adam.
Can I, can we, can I jump back a couple of steps to the 40B comment that you made? Is the, is affordable housing typically under the jurisdiction of the ZBA?
I wouldn't say...
Or the select board?
The 40B process statutorily is under the jurisdiction of the ZBA.
Right.
The question about, you know, affordable housing is not only 40B related, it's, it could be, you know, inclusionary zoning that promotes, you know, affordable housing, it could be, you know, zoning for two-family housing that would, that would promote more affordable housing, could be looking at apartment zoning, it's, I think affordable housing is more than just a 40B development.
What, right, but what I think Dan's, what the select board, I think, was looking to do was update the guidelines on 40B.
That's correct. There were a set of guidelines that were done on 40B projects that were drafted before the town had actually hit the 10% threshold about what our goals and objectives were.
2000, is that from 2012 you're referring, or is it, or the more recent draft that Dan?
That was, that was the first draft, I think that was done in 2000, okay, I don't, the year is not jumping into my head, so I don't want to say specifically, it was the first draft, and he's done, he's done an update of that, and he's carrying forward a lot of the same principles and goals, and, but there are some changes he's making, and he's updated the kind of the project list. I mean, those, those projects basically, you know, identified areas of town where higher density housing would be encouraged, in large part within the commercial areas or within the commercial districts or in proximity to those locations, and then basically established a lower density profile out in the neighborhoods, in terms of how many units per acre would be appropriated at different locations.
And let me say a couple of things about that. It is, it is important for the select board to take the lead on this, particularly at this time, that the town has met its goal and has exceeded the goal that's set by the state, largely by means of encouraging the development of large multifamily rental housing, where every unit counts toward our goal beyond the 25% of units that are affordable in these developments. So we're fortunately, fortunate to be at the point where the selectmen actually have considerable authority in this regard, because what the town is, what, there's a tool that 40B provides, which, which is often referred to as a friendly 40B, and even though we have met our goal, the Board of Appeals with, provided the project is approved by the Board of Selectmen, can approve a 40B project, and in fact has approved a 40B project as a friendly 40B, and that's the, the property that's next door to the Congregational Church across the street from the mobile station, where there's something like 16 or 20 units proposed in addition to the existing building which previously was used as some kind of senior housing, assisted living. So that has been, as far as I know, our first and only friendly 40B, 40B under these provisions, but it certainly is a tool that can be used in the future, and I'm glad to see the select board, you know, coming up with, with new guidelines. How can we review these guidelines at this time, Lee, are they posted?
I have a draft document, I'm going to, I'll email it to you.
Terrific, okay.
And then...
Adam, yes?
I guess I was bringing this up, because it would seem to me that although by procedure, through their executive authority, the select board obviously plays a role in determining, plays a role in that they are seeking multiple stakeholder opinions, but it would seem to me that although the ZBA generally handles 40B in certain or most circumstances, that we should really be the ones as the planning board, setting out certain goals by type of development and by geography.
Our report is, is being sought at this time.
Right. Right, I just, I don't know if the planning board has had a previous, Lee, has the, has the planning department set up and published any kind of goals separate from the select board of what it sees as a priority, either for increased density by geography or by type of development? Has there been a master, is there any kind of a master plan from the planning board on housing?
There was a housing plan that was done by the town a number, a number of years ago, which I, you know, which identified housing goals for Needham, which was then adopted, which actually prepared by the planning department, and there's a community process that was done to develop that plan, which established at that time what the housing goals were. That probably needs to be reexamined and updated at this, at this point.
Could you send that, could you send that as well when you send Dan's memo?
Sure.
Yes, it would be good to send a link to that, I have a hard copy of it.
Yeah, sure, I will, I will be glad, and also on the, on the webpage that the town has, you know, for housing, there's a lot of information that's out there.
And a very, a very good report was done only a couple of years ago, authored by Karen Sonenberg and Lee Newman, that has demographic data and really learned quite a bit reading that report. You know the report I'm speaking of?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, Ted Owens?
So, just for Adam's benefit, when we discussed accessory dwelling units, we did spend a tremendous amount of time talking about housing and affordability and those types of issues. So it's not a completely new topic for the planning board, and that was when we went through Karen and Lee's study in great detail.
That's right. Oh, I'd just like to mention something. I was doing some research into the town of Wellfleet's zoning bylaw. My daughter is, bought property in Wellfleet and engaged an architect this summer, and the architect was, I had a question, not about my daughter's property, but about a different client, and so my daughter thought I, I'd just help, help the architect. So I read the Wellfleet bylaw, they have a very interesting accessory dwelling unit provision. They only allow accessory dwelling units if the accessory unit is to be rented as an affordable dwelling unit, and, and not only rented, like you might rent it to your mother or sister, no, it has to be also marketed in the same manner that an affordable housing unit would be marketed in any kind of, you know, the type of 40B developments we're used to. I thought that was a very interesting and unusual provision to find in a local bylaw, and they, and they, not, the unit sizes they allowed were quite large. I don't remember the exact square footage, but I was surprised at how large the accessory dwelling units were that they would allow under this provision, but I wonder what success they've had, I might even contact the planning staff in Wellfleet and find out if they had many applicants.
I think Karen can update you on that, there are a couple, there are a couple communities on the Cape that have that, that have that model.
Yeah, that's interesting, because my, my former law firm, KP Law, we represent almost all the communities on the Cape, and I, from my experience, they really, really want affordable housing in their communities, because the people who live there year-round, who are the voters, are the people who, who need this housing. Particularly Province Town was very aggressive in wanting affordable housing in its town. So, anyway, just an aside.
On a slightly different topic, I guess this is in the nature of an alert that we're all somewhat aware of, but coming down the pike, there is a big movement nationwide toward trying to get rid of single-family zoning as supposedly a culprit, impeding more affordable housing in the suburbs. And you saw it a little bit in Article 17 at the recent town meeting, where one of the whereas clauses talked about single-family zoning. I think, you know, Article 17 passed pretty easily, town meeting, but there was, as I read it, some discomfort with a couple of those whereas clauses, which maybe kept it from being a virtually unanimous vote. But I just think we all ought to be thinking about this single-family zoning thing and how we feel about it, because I think we may fairly soon come under some pressure to, to be asked to take a position about it.
Well, I think, you know, I think, I think there's a question about, you know, do you support the whereas clause itself, and, you know, what, what kinds of questions does the planning board want to be, you know, asking itself, and what kinds of policy changes do you want to be talking about?
Yeah.
I think that is something we're going to face in this year to come, there's a lot of movement in that direction, I agree.
I don't, when we do that, I don't think that it should be seen as an isolation, I think that we have to look at, from a 360 perspective, or the common buzzword is holistically, that it's not just a function of our residential zoning, but we should look at all, we should look at all, like, all types, industrial and commercial types of zoning, and identify certain goals. I mean, I think, Marty, what you're referring to has colloquially been discussed as snob zoning, not in my backyard, which is by far common practice in the suburbs, but regarded by many as discriminatory.
Yeah, I think it's a little broader than just talking about snob zoning, but it's trying to attack the whole concept of single-family zoning, not just two-acre lots or even one-acre lot.
Right.
Even 10,000 square feet, you know, quarter-acre lots.
Exactly.
And, you know, I just think people should be thinking about this, because it's coming at us, and, you know, I don't view all single-family zoning as essentially racist or discriminatory at all, but I think that's something that we need to be alert to, that we're going to have to take a position, I think.
I agree.
I agree, but as long as we're on this subject, something to ask, I have a memory, and I don't know if it comes out of my undergraduate education, my work as a planner in Framingham, or my law school education, that the case in Massachusetts that upheld single-family zoning on 10,000 square foot lots was a Needham case, and it had wording about the goals that people had of open space and a certain way of life and so on. I would love to find that case. Is anybody... Has anybody ever heard of it? Am I the only one who's read this case? I remember reading it.
I don't, I don't know.
Nobody, nobody remembers ever learning about this case, well, I've, I've got to do some digging and find this case. I was thinking, with this first name, Bobrowski, who wrote the book on Landysla, maybe I'll give him a call. But anyway, that's just a little, perhaps even humorous aside. Do we want to continue this discussion, or is it time to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion is second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we stand adjourned. Good night, and thank you, by the way, members of the board. As we go along in these Zoom meetings, I find myself very apt to forget a step. And I very much appreciate being reminded of such things as, you know, we need a motion to waive the reading of their of the notice or anything else that I, that I miss, very much appreciated, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, Jean.